Turn on, okay. Make sure I'm getting this recorded. Good evening, or good afternoon, something like that. The sun is still out, makes it feel like it's still daytime. We're going to talk during this session about some of the legal issues we are facing associated with people sleeping in the public right-of-way, what's come up in terms of court cases, in terms of state law that are driving us to need to make some changes in our local code. We have some slides we're going to throw up here to try and help walk through this. I'm going to tell you, this is tag-team, we've been working on this with Chief Stevenson, Police Department clearly has an issue here. Kelly Hart, our Community Development Director, because we are talking code. Jason Williams, Public Works, we're talking about people sleeping in parks and on public right-of-way, which is Public Works Arena. So, we're going to tag-team this and hopefully answer questions. There's no decision that we're going to ask you to make tonight. This is an opportunity, particularly with new councilors, to bring you up to speed on a journey we have been on, to try and figure out what our alternatives are that keep us legal, in compliance with court decisions and state law, and what our alternatives are. So, I'm going to start off with asking Frank to start.
Yeah, so Ken and Nancy kind of touched on the legalities is what kind of brought all this up to where, obviously, the police are getting involved. So, the issue at hand is camping in public places. And where we're running up, or will be running into, an issue is what to do with individuals who are camping on public right-aways, and if there is something that we can do, how are we going to go about doing that? Some of the codes in our own language is something that needed to be looked at, as well as we need to come up with some kind of solution to where to tell people to go once they are no longer allowed, say, for instance, in a park. When the park closes, it's a public place, and they're sleeping, do we have the legal right to ask them to move? And if we do, where do they go to? We have to have, we had to find locations in order for us to be able to enforce any kind of trespassing issue, or advising them they need to move along. And the reasoning, you know, the bottom line is, we want to get away from just simply going in there, telling them to leave, and then arresting them when they don't. We want to make sure that we, if we tell them to leave, we have another location they can actually go to. Now, if they don't go to that location, and they want to still remain on scene or camping, then we have some legal teeth to address that issue. So, that's kind of where it all kind of came, where I was recognizing that if we don't take some sort of action, or if we, as a city, don't look at this and go, you know, we need, look at the language in the code, and see what can be done, we'll be facing the issue of illegal camping, camps being set up where we can't do anything about. So, and that's really where the biggest issue from the police side comes into play. So, I brought, we brought this, we brought this, how many years? Two years ago, started talking and having this discussion, went to different places that were, how are they addressing illegal camping? And especially with the House bill coming down, what's it, what House bill number was that, 3115?
3115.
The Boise case. Basically, what are we going to do as a city to address the issue?
Yeah, so, the last-term counsel appointed an ad hoc task force to work with us and talk about what we might recommend in terms of amendments to current code to bring us into compliance. And I will tell you that as staff, we started trying to work through this, and figure out alternatives and solutions. We needed to define what success was going to look like coming out of this. We needed to make sure we studied and knew the legal framework, all of the court cases, what they meant, and then state law. And as we go through this, you're going to clearly hear there are some things that are not clearly defined, that are leaving us with, we think this is probably pretty good. We looked at implementation options, we did talk to other entities providing services for homeless. Because this addresses sleeping, staying warm and dry on all public property, we did an assessment of public property in Lebanon, and then started working towards what our next steps were. When it comes to defining success, again, we were back at what our ad hoc committee assignment was, which included looking at funding considerations, who's got money, who doesn't, how do you fund it, how to meet the legal requirements? And then, we really dug into, what are the availability of services to support the unhoused? We don't currently have any providers in Lebanon offering a shelter service or a managed camp. There are providers in Lebanon that are providing services to people who are homeless, Soup Kitchen is one, Community Services Consortium, the Family Assistance Center comes to town several times a week, providing some services to the homeless, but none of those entities are in a place where they are operating a shelter. And some things that we know from some of the court cases are, if you've got shelter beds available, you can tell people they can't sleep in the park, they have to go to the shelter, we don't have a shelter. And so, that drove a lot of our conversation. So, we did discuss internally whether we could establish and manage a shelter, or a managed camp. Both of those are going to be staff and cost-intensive, and we have no resources to put on that. We don't have the staff. We don't, anywhere in our current operations, have social workers, mental health, rehab, addiction services as part of our book of business. So, it would be, if we were to operate something like that, it would be a whole-new funding stream that would be required to look at that. So, though we did talk to Family Assistance Center, Helping Hands, Rogue Retreat, St. Vincent de Paul, who are all providing those services elsewhere in the state, to see if they wanted to operate a branch in Lebanon, none of them were. And basically, what we heard from all of them was kind of, we're full up with what we're currently doing, and we don't have capacity to expand beyond our current area that we're serving. So, that really took us to option number four, which was, the best we can do is to establish regulations for how people can have protection from the elements. It's not a camp, it's not a shelter, it's not fixing homelessness, it's not helping people who are homeless, but it is providing and correcting our code, which currently says you can't sleep in parks. It makes clear when you can and can't sleep in parks, and it will provide the police department someplace where they can tell people, this is where you can go, this is where you can sleep, and be within the law. So, that really came down to, that's our success, is will we be in compliance with the law? Again, I think we recognize, having a shelter, particularly with wraparound services, is the model that people who talk about success for moving people off of homelessness talk about, that being housed, having a place where you are, this is my bed, this is my place, this is where I store my things, where you have access to showers, to three meals a day, to laundry facilities, and more importantly, I think, to those wraparound services, whether it's job training, it's mental health, it's addiction services to move you off of addiction, that's the best way to get people out of homelessness, but without that, we really are at the place where what we're bringing in is what we can, which is compliance with law. So, I'm going to give you just a little bit of background on case law, and I'm going to say Trey is going to jump in when I say things wrong, because when it comes to the legal environment, words matter very clearly. So, the first case that we popped up with was what's called the Boise case. This was decided by the Ninth Circuit, it was not appealed to the Supreme Court, it only applies in the Ninth Circuit. And so, one of the things that you're seeing across the country right now are differences in how states are handling homelessness. In the Ninth Circuit, in the Boise case, the court decision was basically, if you don't have any place else for someone to sleep, they must be allowed to sleep on public property. Now, we are seeing other states where they are making it against the law to sleep on public property. That's probably coming up through the Fifth and/or Sixth Circuit, and some point, maybe all of these cases land at the Supreme Court with a, we need to either let each circuit do whatever they're doing, and they don't take the case up, or we need to make a decision about how this is going to be handled across the country. That's probably seven to 10 years before we get those cases ratcheting up all the way to the Supreme Court. I will note, in the case of the Boise decision, there were shelter beds available, but in that case, the shelter beds were available in a facility that required people to participate in religious activities, mostly like prayers, and those kinds of things. And the court said, you can't require people to participate in a religious activity in order to have a shelter. And so, even though there were beds available, that didn't count. And that was how Boise has been delivered. The second case came up out of Grants Pass, the current status on that case, it was decided by three members of the Ninth Circuit, it has been appealed to the full Ninth Circuit, and I think documents have been filed, but no hearing has been scheduled as of now. So, we may get, we may get more on that. It does expand on Boise, expands on the fact that you can't make it, you can't provide civil or punitive fines for people sleeping in public locations. In Grants Pass, they were basically citing people who were sleeping in parks. They got a little bit closer to saying, what is keeping warm and dry? They didn't fully define it, but they went to sleeping, sitting, lying, warm and dry. What they did include in that is, but that doesn't include building fires. And maybe part of that coming out of Grants Pass, where they had had the big fires in 2020, fire is a major concern about, in the greenway and those kinds of things, but it clarified that, which was helpful. They also identified that there has to be a due process for a person who is excluded from a park. Currently, we allow people, allow people, we can exclude people from public parks when their behavior exceeds certain standards. There has to be a due process appeal for that exclusion, and we do have a due process in place, but that was there. Neither of these cases identified that you have to establish a camp, and I think we designate the difference between what we're talking about in our code, in terms of protection from the elements, as being something temporary. A camp is something that's more permanent, it's what you see in a lot of places when you drive down I-5, where there are tents set up, maybe multiple tents, they may have wooden structures they've built, shacks, there are tarps over areas, and maybe multiple people living in that area, and they're there daily for a longer period of time. Neither of these cases said you have a right to camp, you have a right to build a facility on public property and live there permanently. And neither of these cases have said that the city is required to provide a shelter facility where people who are homeless can go. So, I think that's where we started in terms of case law. We built on top of that with state law, and I'm going to start backwards here. House Bill 2006 pertains to the citing of a homeless facility, mostly a shelter, is discussed, and most communities would say, by their land development code, for example, that a shelter has to be established in a commercial zone. What HB 2006 did, and it's been extended to Sunset, July 1 of 2023, may go beyond that, is basically said, someone who wants to establish a shelter can do so in any zone except industrial. So, commercial zone, residential zone, behind a church, wherever you can find a place to put a shelter, you can put a shelter, and a city may not use its land development code to deny that placement. We've had nobody who has come to town saying they wanted to establish a shelter. If we did, then we would start talking to you more about that language, but we don't need to take that up at this point. House Bill 3124 establishes procedures for cleaning up camps, requires posting those camps 72 hours in advance, requires the people doing that cleanup to identify what is coming out of that camp that's of value to store it, it's got to be stored in a place that's accessible, where people can go and claim their property. We have all of those in place already. So, we come down to HB 3115, this is the state law that says we have to allow persons' protection from the elements on public property. They do say that there are reasonable restrictions that can apply, but they also require us to have something implemented by June 30, 2023. So, the ordinance language that is drafted for you to review needs to be adopted before June 30, is really the timeline we're on. So, as we looked at our compliance framework, again, we don't need to do anything currently with 2006 or 3124, the work we needed to do is focused on 3115. So, that took us into reasonable and objective standards. You'll hear this a lot in land use stuff, reasonable and objective standards. So, this is where Kelly got to get involved a lot, in terms of looking at what reasonable and objective standards might be, and how to define those. Again, this is a term used in 3115, it's not defined. So, your reasonable and objective may not be mine, and ultimately, there will be court cases that will start pointing us in the direction of whether or not any individual action is considered reasonable and objective. So, we looked at time considerations, and started with, if you could stay there for 24 hours, you were really creating a camp, and starting to talk about establishing a more permanent living facility.
Bless you.
Yeah, bless you. We did, in talking through this, our park hours are, our parks are currently open from dawn to dusk, closed dusk to dawn. Those hours, I didn't know this, but there is an app where you can track what time and where you are in dusk, and there are like 12 different stages of dusk, and 12 different stages of dawn. That gets a little too difficult to know, is it dusk to dawn? And frankly, as we talked about park usage, I think we all recognize, people use the parks into the evening, right? You take your dog for a walk after dinner, you ate dinner at 7:30, you're taking your dog for a walk at 8. This time of year, it's dark, it's not even dusk, it's dark at 8 o'clock at night. And so, we really wanted to look at how we could focus park hours, and so, what you see in the ordinances is basically saying, parks are open 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That matches with noise ordinance language. Because most of our parks are in residential neighborhoods, rounded on all sides with houses, that kind of lets us match those timeframes up, gives the police department specific times. So, if you're still in the park at 11 o'clock at night, they'll tell you it's time to go home, or move to another location, as opposed to, well, is it dusk or not dusk yet? In talking with the ad hoc task force, they wanted to be sure that in the wintertime, moving to the night sleeping location could happen before 10:00 p.m., because at 10 o'clock at night, it's so dark that trying to get set up in a new place may be a challenge. So, I believe that the ordinance language is allowing for that. We talked a lot about place considerations, because that's a challenge. In your packet, there is a wee little map of the city, the pink sites on that are city-held public property, but I would say it is not all, because you have to realize that public property includes the street, the vanity strip, and the public sidewalk on every street in town. So, when you start considering all of that, we'd have had a mostly pink map, right, every block. We wanted to be clear about what we were looking at in terms of public property, and the availability of public property to identify, here's where we could establish a place where people can sleep. So, we originally started with a very colorful map that had cities, school district, county, state, and federal lands identified on it. As staff, we thought we should not put the federals or state government on that list, or school district property, there's not a lot of county property in the city limits, so we took those off also, and really focused on city property, since the city is the one who's tasked with identifying where people can sleep. We ruled out some other things based on safety of people, so water, wastewater, stormwater, infrastructure is out. Places, for example, around a pump station or a lift station may look like, oh, I could put a tent or two right there, but those are places with heavy machinery, large pumps, we need access to them 24/7, and that creates a unique challenge. We do have a lot of publicly-owned property in Lebanon that's floodplain or riparian area, so think creeks, think areas that flood a lot and can't be developed, wetlands, those kinds of areas are not appropriate for people to camp on, because they're so wet. We wanted to exclude physical safety hazards, so we stayed away from the canal, we tried to stay away from the railroad as much as possible, state highways where there's a lot of traffic. If you follow Portland, what's happening with homeless there, they've started really trying to move people off of the interstate corridors, the right-of-way areas, because in some cases, they're very steep slopes, and you have traffic zooming by at, you know, 70 miles an hour, and that makes them kind of inherently unsafe for people, we wanted to look at similar kinds of things. We did exclude residential areas, and there are a couple of reasons for that. One is, property owner has liability for what happens on the sidewalk. City owns it, it's city property, but the abutting property owner has liability. And we have very few residential areas that have a sidewalk wide enough that you could have a tent or somebody sleeping on it, and still have ADA accessibility. We wanted to recognize, you know, people are walking their kids in strollers, and bikes, and wheelchairs, and that ADA accessibility needed to remain. So, we took all of that off. We recognize sanitation facilities have to be made available, you've got to have a porta-pot, you've got to have handwashing stations, garbage disposal. If it's not in a building, you've got to be able to accommodate tents of some kind, because there are a lot of pop-up tents you can sleep in, don't require tent pegs necessarily. And then, best practices are, the site should be somewhat close to the services being provided that a homeless person might need to access, available transit sidewalks, the ability to get around easily, does come into play in terms of place considerations. As far as manor is concerned, we agreed that we needed to prohibit the use of fire or open flames, that is a community danger, and in fact, we have taken out all of the, I don't know if you call them fire pits or fire stands that we had in parks, they were all being vandalized anyway. So, you can take like your propane cooker with you and cook your burgers in the park, but there's not a place to throw a bunch of charcoal or wood and build a fire anymore. We needed to make sure that we prohibited the use of materials that can't be easily moved, so, no, you're not building a shed for the night. You can allow tents, tarps, sleeping bags, cots, you just would have to fold them up and move them the next day. And then, again, back to, you're not blocking access to sidewalks, you've got to keep ADA accessibility, and we would need to be able to post rules for the use of the site. So, as we talked about public property, we applied all of what we had in terms of time, place, and manor restrictions. We recommended, and the ad hoc task force agreed, that during the daytime hours, sleeping in a park would be acceptable. We recognize people put up tents or pop-ups for sporting events, if you're having soccer, and you've got kids tucked in, I'm sleeping, you really can't treat homeless people different than you treat everybody else. So, from that perspective, being in the park during the day is what's identified when the park is open, and then recognizing that if a park or a park facility is reserved, that would be excluded. So, we're excluding things like the Academy Square gazebo, which you would pay to rent if you're going to put something in that area. Again, looking at city property, we came up with four potential sites, three of which the ad hoc task force recommended council consider. The first one is the sidewalk on Oak Street in front of Public Works, so the green space that you see on the top picture would be identified. It's about 12 feet of distance between the building and the sidewalk, so it would keep the sidewalk open for transport. The one, there are two drawbacks with this site, one is the traffic, this is truck route, so you have heavy trucks going down Oak Street, and there is residential property directly across the street. But it is a place where the sidewalk is wide enough, and there is enough space there that you could put up a tent for the night. The second site is a sidewalk in front of City Hall. Again, this is a very wide sidewalk area, there is no residential property across the street, this is on Maple. There clearly vehicular traffic on Maple Street, but you're either, you've either just crossed Main Street, or you've just made a turn, so the traffic tends to be relatively slow, although I'm going to say a lot of people go the wrong way on Maple Street there. But, that's the second site. The third site, this is a parking lot, I don't know if this, does this light up? Anyway, on the right is Park Street, on the top-left corner of the picture where the, you see the red vehicle, that is City Hall. So, this is a parking lot that is behind City Attorney's Office, and the little shopping area that's on Oak and Park. The ad hoc task force did not recommend this, I think some concern about safety of having people in tents here, and having like a vehicle pull in off the street, thinking they were pulling into a parking place, was a bit of a challenge, and it would need to be used for vehicles during the day. And the fourth site is the Holiday Station at Ralston Park. This is on the corner, the canopy would provide some amount of protection from elements in terms of the ability to put up a tent under it. But again, busy intersection with Oak and Park Street, the canal behind it makes it maybe a little less than ideal. And I will tell you, there is no site that we said as staff, boy, this is it, everyone is going to love this site. But these are the things that the task force looked at for council consideration. So, when we look at the proposed code amendments, and what you have in your packet, in the first exhibit of your packet, we do include the current code language for chapters 1212 and 1214, and then at the back, I think, we have the revised language that we're looking at. I don't know. So, we did reorganize a lot of the language to try and link sections together, and to be much clearer, because we do have a campground in our park system, in terms of Gil's Landing being available for people to camp in, in an RV, not tent camping there, but in an RV. We do clarify park hours, and then, again, just trying to make the language in those sections clearer. The declaration of the site that people could sleep at overnight would be in a resolution the council adopts, so code language would maybe remain stable, but additional sites could be added if needed in the future, or changing the sites would be by resolution. We do designate the time restrictions, and then the requirements, so things like having to keep the sidewalk clear for ADA accessibility would all be part of that language. And then, our next steps would be, basically, this session is to get you all information, hopefully answer questions, if not, be able to go seek additional information to share with you, to answer questions, to discuss the sites, and whether or not council wants to focus on one of these sites, or you have something else that you want to throw out on the table as a potential site, and then, we would on the table as a, as a potential site. And then we would expect to come back, for example, at the March meeting with the ordinance, on the regular agenda where people could come in and make public comments on what's being proposed, and then have council take that up at the March meeting or at a subsequent meeting. We would have the site go into effect 60 days after you adopted the ordinance. That gives us time to get a porta potty, hand washing station. If we were going to need to do any other site preparation, we would have the time to do that, get signage. We have not, through this process, taken up people sleeping in vehicles, particularly RVs that are around town that people are sleeping in, or any of those kinds of things. This is really just dealing with trying to give the police department a place to tell someone who is sleeping in the door of a business downtown, you can't sleep here, here's where you can go. And that's, that's the focus of the work at this point. If the council wanted us to pursue the vehicle camping issues and those kinds of things, that would be additional work. So I'm going to stop there and see if anybody wants to add anything else, and then we'll do questions.
See, I didn't have to jump in once. You did. Excellent. I would say that the Boise case was appealed to the Supreme Court, who denied review. The issue here is, we don't have any conflicting decisions from other circuits. So once another circuit has the issue directly before it and comes to a different decision than the Ninth Circuit, then the Supreme Court was, is likely to accept review to, to resolve an issue of conflicting law between the circuits. But right now, the Ninth Circuit kind of stands alone. And as far as I know, I assume that there will be cases going up in other circuits, but I'm not aware of those.
No.
So on the reasonable objective standards for sitting, laying, sleeping, staying warm and dry, they haven't defined what staying dry and warm is?
They have not.
They just, so is it the onus on the city?
Yes.
To provide that. So that means that if they don't have a tent, they would need a covered area?
So they would either need a covered area, or frankly, wrap up in a tarp, wrap up in a sleeping bag. I, this is, this is one where I think ultimately, you're going to, and I, communities across the state are in this same situation, right, where there's either no provider, there's no shelter, they're trying to figure out what to do. A lot of communities are trying to staff a shelter with volunteers, being successful or not. Ultimately, what I think we'll get to is communities setting in place reasonable objective standards, and then if somebody doesn't like those, they would bring suit. And through that, you would either have the court say, well, that is or is not reasonable. So we could say, you can bring your tent or your tarp, and if you don't have anything, we don't have to provide you with something. Somebody could sue us on that. If they prevail, then the court will say, well, the city has to have tents to hand out. That would then be the court ordering us to take that action. But that's not in the law as it currently exists, as something that we would need to do.
Yeah, and I, if I could just add, I mean, the Blake, the Blake case specifically provided, now it's, I don't know that it was essential to its holding, but it was something that was said in the, in the case, was that unless alternative shelter exists, persons experiencing homelessness are entitled to take necessary minimal measures to keep themselves warm and dry while sleeping. So I mean, at least the argument exists that under that case, that there's no obligation of, of the public entity to provide something that helps them do that, other than a place where they can keep themselves warm and dry.
So really, we're looking at identifying a place so we can enforce sidewalk ordinances and other things, say, hey, we have a designated place for you. You need to move there. There is the, I read the exclusion, kind of the person that they appeal to for the exclusion of, when you're excluded from parks.
That is correct.
Yeah, 12.14.040, if you want to read it. The way I look at it is that any space that we identify to, to meet that goal, or and also to be humane to other human beings, should provide services, humane site. It shouldn't be just, you know, the, the places that were shown, I know that the, the committee looked into those. I don't know if those represent humane, humane site of services, unless we put a lot of resources into those areas. Parking lot, yeah, I would agree with, that would be dangerous. People from out of town would just pull in there and... The, the place in front of the facility shops, there's, as far as I know, there's no services there, and I don't think the manager, the director's going to allow them to go into the building.
No, I think, I think any of these locations would have a porta potty put out. So we'd, we'd tuck one around the corner at City Hall. We'd tuck, put one out on the lot at Public Works. Porta potty, hand washing station, garbage, would, would, we'd have to have a trash bin of some kind and put it out. And any of these locations, I think we would, we are likely to end up needing to clean up after people have been there, right? The, the goal is, you, you come and you sleep, you, you leave in the morning, you take all of your things with you. But I think what we see when people abandon camps around town is they don't take everything with them. They leave a fair amount of garbage out. So, so I think part of what we were also trying to look at was, how easy is it for Public Works to get in and clean those spaces and, and take care of them? And to some extent, I, I think wanting to be able to give service providers specificity about where might you find people, let's say, 6 o'clock in the morning, show up with a pot of coffee, and see if you can't help people get into services, right? I, I think what, what we have heard from a lot of service providers is, it's not a one-and-done contact. It is, it is dozens, if not hundreds, of contacts over multiple periods to develop a sense of trust and a willingness to maybe make a change in a lifestyle before you actually get movement from someone. So having some stability in finding people, as opposed to where are you around town, has some advantage. And we have not said, you know, basically, it's any park in town. We didn't say during the day, you can sleep in this park, you can, it would be in any park in town.
Michelle, did you have something to add? It looked like you were about to say something.
No, I can't even remember what it was, but it was answered.
Okay.
I got a question real quick. Just, I don't know if Frank knows this. What's the scale of this in the, in our community? Is there, is there 25 people we're talking about? Is there 100 people we're talking about? I've heard numbers all the way between that.
Everybody's looking at me.
Your mic's not on.
Oh, there it is. My apologies. I think KJ and I talked about this. You said, anywhere from 20, or 20 to 25?
I think realistically, homeless, we're looking at 20, 25, somewhere in that range.
And that's consistent with...
Say again?
I said that's consistent with our count as well.
Yeah.
That was input I got. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't offscale there.
And then, and then the other question I had, and I think KJ kind of answered it, we talked about this briefly the other day, but when you provide services, does that become a magnet, and does the population increase? And the answer was, not really.
Not really, no. When we, when we started doing the, our homeless work, one of the big drawbacks that everybody saw was, they said if you build it, they will come. And that, in fact, is not the case. Our homeless numbers, and I'm sure Frank can bear this out, three years ago, we were probably three times the number of homeless in town here that we have now. The, the numbers have just gone down, even though the services have increased.
Even though I'm naive, is it possible that other areas around us are more attractive? So the, some of those were here?
For some of them, sure. When Corvallis opened up a lot of their services and allowed the churches to do things, we had people flat telling us, hey, we're going to Corvallis. They started letting them put porta potties out by the churches and gave them a place to go, and they brought food to them. And that became an, an issue. Some of them came back when they stopped doing that, but not many. We don't do anything like that here.
Now, what was the big opposition to identifying an exclusion zone within a park? Was there, was there any opposition to that? Identifying an area in, like River Park was, we had talked about this in the past. River Park have an exclusion area to the, the ordinances that's in the back of the park. And I was talking to Jason today, and he said that used to be a camping area already. So there are some, you know, the, my big thing with this is identifying a place that, that provides resources or services that we don't have to build again. We already have places that possess these, these things. So finding a place like that, River Park is, is not in the middle of a neighborhood. It's on towards the, the outer part of the city. So, you know, it has an RV dump for the RVs. They could, you know, possibly have that waived when they need to dump. You know, there's, there's, I guess I'm looking at, when I think of this problem, is I look at places that already possess a lot of services that would need to be provided anyhow. And then the other day, I was walking down, I think it was Seventh Street, and there was an RV that was burned, basically burned to the ground, and they were towing it off. So there, there's that aspect that we have to consider with, with RVs parking next to each other. Is that a fire hazard? Is the fire district, you know, what's their opinion on, on those type of situations?
To be clear, I think the services we're on the hook to provide, though, are hand washing statements and, or hand washing stations, excuse me, and a porta potty. Am I correct or incorrect on that?
No, that, that, that would need to be provided, and, and that would be something we would pay for.
Okay.
So garbage?
That's the minimal, that's, that's the, that's the lowest bar of the services we are on the hook to provide.
That is correct.
I just wanted to make sure that that's clarified. Thank you.
Would that also include garbage?
Yes. I, I think the concern, so there are several concerns about identifying, for example, River Park as the place where you can sleep during the day and the night, means you are letting people set up a camp, and you're doing that with no management of that facility. In the homeless population, oftentimes, there is a lot of violence of homeless people and homeless people. So the more people you put into a camp area, the more opportunity for bad behavior, for ambulance, EMT calls, for the need for police to go in and address that. And i- if it's not well managed, you don't have the ability to maybe get good walkways into tent areas. The places, and, and a couple of years ago, we made a visit to Rogue Retreat in Medford. They offer kind of a complete menu. So they have a, they have a managed tent camp, they have a managed shelter, they have a micro shelter area, they have low-income apartments. All of that, they're providing wraparound services. They are spending a lot of money to do all of that. But their managed camp, their tents are in a row, you have the tent, you have a pop-up over the tent, you have someone who's working there 24/7, who at, at intake is like starting the whole, do you have a license? Do you have a social security card? Do you, you know, are you eligible for benefits? Can we get you signed up for those things? And, and if you are willing to try and move out of being homeless, they can move you up through their system, out, out into independence.
Lots of caseworkers.
They do have a lot of caseworkers. So if we were to identify and say, River Park, you can just be here and camp, then without management, you don't have the ability to say, let's make sure we have walkways, make sure we're putting the trash away, we're not collecting rats, and because you're on the river, there'll be easy to collect rats there. You know, how you, how you handle that without management, I think creates a, a real challenge.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that the caretaker at River Park would be the manager, but the, the maintenance of the park is, is his duties, correct?
That's correct.
As in his duty responsibilities. Okay.
Yeah, I think the issue with the park is, if they're allowed to sleep and camp in the park, then daytime comes. We're not allowed to remove them from the park in the daytime because everyone's allowed in the park in the daytime. It becomes what, like Nancy said, it becomes a full-time camp. And working in the city of Salem the last few years, I've seen where that goes, and it is not, it's not pretty.
Yeah, as a parent too, I have that same concern, having brought my kids downtown, or the, to that park in Salem, and what used to be very comfortable for families and kids is no longer.
It's a quick way to turn the citizens' mood sour when they go to the park expecting like, you know, a clean place for their kids to be able to run around. They're having to pick up needles and whatnot.
Well, that, that goes back to what I was saying earlier. Is there any way we can, by ordinances, identify exclusion zone within that park, or that doesn't fall under the park definitions anymore?
How do you stop them from coming out of there?
That's a trick question.
So the use of the word exclusion is what's, what's causing some concern? So, so it, it doesn't have to comply to the park ordinances anymore. If you designate...
So you're saying it's an area where we could still say they couldn't stay or sleep during the day, which means they would still have to...
Yeah, because it's not considered a park anymore. It's considered...
You'd have to redesignate an area as not being part of the park and being something else.
Yes.
I mean, you know, at that point, you know, what are you doing? You're saying, okay, you got to move 10 feet? I mean, that's just, I mean, that's the reality. I'm not saying it couldn't be done.
No, I, I understand, I understand the point. I'm just trying to see if there's any other option besides sidewalks right on the main thoroughfares through town. So, KJ?
Part of the issue you're going to run into, unless it's actively managed, Frank's going to end up putting an officer down there full-time. These folks do not get along and play well with others. They're not going to go into a consolidated area that's not actively managed to avoid a lot of confrontational issues. The lion's share of the folks have got mental health issues, underlying drug and alcohol issues. And then you can find them, tell them you, you have, this is where you have to be. That's going to consolidate some tempers. And we're going to have additional issues that are going to fall back on the city at that point. As it is now, you'll see temporary alliances with these folks out on the street to watch each other's back, but you typically don't see more than two or three of them together at a time in the evening, trying to get any sleep. They don't, and I understand why, they don't trust each other. So...
Understood.
There might be some benefit if they, I'm sorry.
Chief, Chief Stevenson, when they were in, when we had a homeless population in the park before, wasn't it along the river? Am I, like, right on the river?
Yeah.
So that option isn't, I mean, I'm going to call it the preferred option in terms of, for the population, because that's where they were at the time. That's not an option for us as this body here today because of the safety issues.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have the same, the correct location.
So the concern of them going into the river and drowning?
There, there's that concern, and, and I think KJ was hitting it on the nose with, anytime you have an unmanaged camp, you're going to have, you're going to have issues. I don't know if you guys watched KATU News, I think it was on, it was an unmanaged camp up in Portland. And as, as they're filming, there was a fight that broke out, and then, yeah, and then an individual got shot and ran out into the woods. And when the police arrived, no one's cooperating with the police. And so here we have this issue of an unmanaged camp that can turn extremely violent at, at a minute's notice. And that's why, in, in my opinion, it's, if we're going to form a camp place, a place for them to camp, it needs to be a managed site. And, and unmanaged, it can, it just, we had one at the, I can't remember what church it was, but they were allowing...
St. Martin's.
St. Martin's, yeah.
There, it was, it was allowed that people could go there and, and sleep in the parking lot. And that lasted for about, I think, four weeks until they were, until police were involved, because they no longer wished for them to be there. And so it was a long process to, because again, it was unmanaged. So you had all kinds of elements coming in into that area, criminal, all kinds of issues that arose.
Then that brings up my next question, would be, these other, these other locations that the committee identified, would those be managed?
No. None of these locations would be managed because we have no entity here stepping up to say we would manage a, a camp, or a shelter, or anything else.
So those concerns, we run into those same concerns with these other sites?
Right. The, the difference would be, you could sleep in the park during the day, and at night, you have to move to the sidewalk in front of City Hall, and at 7:00 in the morning... And at seven in the morning, you have to clear out. You can go back to the park, you can go wherever, but you can't be on this sidewalk anymore.
Two, two of the three sites though are managed in the sense of just because they're small in size, I would, I would say.
They are small in size and they are in places where city employees are gonna have,
Easily accessible.
Yeah. So, uh, um, you know, that, that I think makes, uh, some part of management a little bit easier. I- in terms of, of having people move. And, and I'll tell you, it, it, it's not, it's not a solution to someone being homeless. It's, there's no service provision. There's no assistance being provided. There's no stability. There still is no hot shower, no laundry facilities. None of that is, is available with this. But lacking a service provider who steps up and says, I can do this. It, it's the best that we've been able to come up with.
I don't know that we've given you real direction, uh, out of this conversation. But one thing I would like to explore, you mentioned that county properties were removed from this. If there are any that could be brought, just, just so we can take a peek at them. And I say this only because I, I understand in Sweet Home that the county, that county deeded that property over to the cities, like, for that shelter. So, um, if there is anything like that in Lebanon, I just wanna make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and taking a peek at that, if that's something that a partnership could come from.
I, I, I have to tell you, I got really excited when I saw the state of Oregon owned a piece of property here, but, uh, it's on the airport and it is restricted to airport usage. Um, cause I thought that would be a, a good spot, uh, to put the state, um, on that list. The county has one parcel that I'm aware of that's vacant and otherwise their property here is like the sheriff's substation, the health department. Um, I don't, are you aware of any others?
Not any, I think that would be suitable. We are having some discussions on one site that is a possibility, but hasn't gone far enough to even, we're exploring that. Let's just put it that way.
Just was curious.
What was the reason for ruling out the park area across from the wastewater treatment plant? The big, big open area out there?
It's predominantly because, uh, it's across from the wastewater treatment plant. So you do have a lot of, uh, industrial vehicles going up and down Tennessee road there. There's not a sidewalk. Um, you could get there by taking a trail around, but there's not a direct way to get there. Um, it's far from services. Could you get a transit bus to pick you up there and take you to, you know, your job or your doctor, whatever? Yes. Call for a, a links transit bus, but it's not convenient to services. Those were the reasons we, we really ruled that out.
Well, this-
By our definition, it's not convenient to services. Cause there's not a state definition
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
This, for this to work, it's gonna be enforcement driven. And I, I, I would guess the question would be for the police chief, if you guys have the time to be dealing with these curfews, 10 o'clock checking all the parks, kicking them out, and then 7:00 AM the next morning, making sure they're leaving the sleeping area. Is that something that you guys are capable of or have the will to do?
The will, yeah. The capability, no. I mean, most of our, um, issues are complaint-driven. I would say a hundred percent of them are complaint-driven when someone's in the park after hours or they need to be leaving a certain location. It's, it's based on a complaint. Where I'm coming from is when that complaint does come in, what are we, what are we to do?
Okay.
And if we don't have anything set in place, there's absolutely zero that we can do. And, and that's, that's not a feeling for me to have.
Right.
It's, cause I wanna provide a service. So-
So this gives you guys a tool when someone's complaining about there being camps in the park. You can send your crews out there. They can say, time to leave the park. These spots are available for you to sleep.
Correct.
And then, then they go set up in those spots and, um, just due to being able to clear the sidewalk out in the morning, that, that'll have to be making sure that people are up and out of there. But it's right by City Hall, I guess, so.
Correct. Nancy's pretty good at going it.
Yeah.
It's right outside my window.
Yeah, I, it's, it's, it's an extremely complex issue. Um, and, and it's, it's one of those things where, you know, there's really no easy answer, easy, easy solution to this problem. But, uh, we have to look at, okay, what is the solution today? What can we do today in order for us to, um, not only want to comply with what the law is stating, but what are we gonna do with these complaints that come in to not only the police department, but to, to all of this body sitting here today saying, what are you guys doing in regards to this issue? You know, if there's absolutely zero, then, you know, we're gonna be left.
The issue is, is, you know, this is clearly, am I on, this is clearly a, a short-term resolution of a, kind of an issue that's been forced upon us. And in order to comply, we have to, we have to find a way to comply with state law. And it's, it's not a matter of, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do anything. We don't have resources.
Yeah, right.
And at some point, at some point, you know, and there's already resources being talked about, the mayor's coalition and, and different things. And the governors, you know, announced, uh, um, different, um, ways to try to raise money. And, and really it's, this is a, you know, it's a Band-Aid, um, until we can find something that makes more sense and have a partner that can work through with us. But we do have to do something.
But it gives us a legal way of removing them from the park at night if we, if we are called to do that.
Absolutely. Yep.
I think the committee did us a good job of getting us to the basics. We have a long ways to go from there, but it's a good start.
It is a good start. So I'm, I'm watching the clock here, needing to start regular business.
So I guess we'll adjourn this one.
We can adjourn this. We can come back and have more conversation at the end of the regular council meeting on this if you wanna do that. Um, and I will say, nothing says you have to act on it in March. If you wanna have some more time to think about it, look at other sites around town. Um, if you have questions that you wish to have staff pursue more information, a different alternative, then we can do that and bring that information back in March. So, uh, just, it's, it's complex and we have struggled with it mightily. And so join the struggle and thank you.
All righty. The work session is adjourned.
We take ten. Taking ten.
Taking three?
Let's please rise for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Mann.
Present.
Counselor Workman.
Present.
Counselor Salvage. Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Ulfers.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
Next item is the consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussions in these items unless a counselor so requests. In this case, the items will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Agenda, Lebanon City Council, Council Agenda, February 8th, 2023. Annual Reports, Urban Renewal Districts. Appointment, Cindy Kirby to Parks, Trees, Trails. Minutes from January 11th, 2023, work session and regular session. January 25th, 2023, work session and easement, uh, sewer and water easement, North Fifth Street Apartment Pro- Project. Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Counselor Alford and second by Counselor Workman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, motion passes unanimously. Public comments. Ci- citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony slash comment card prior to speaking and hand it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide co- uh, comments to council. The council may take up additional two minutes to respond. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at speaker's request. So tonight we have, up first is J, RJ Wild.
Have they done this before?
Please, please up here.
Oh, okay, cool.
Just sit down and pull the microphone close.
Sorry. I said, I've never come to one of these before. It's actually really interesting to see your working session. So, okay, so, um, I live on Second Street and Rose Street is to the south of me and the public library's to the north of me. And if you're familiar with Second Street, Second Street's fairly wide because there's a lot of commercial businesses on there. Except when you get to Rose Street, it narrows noticeably because it's all residential. And for whatever reason, in the last month, the density of parked cars on that section of the street has increased. And I cannot see when I pull out of my driveway. And oftentimes my neighbors are parking right up next to my driveway, sometimes within half a foot of the edge of my driveway. And so there's a couple of issues contributing to this. One, there's a growing pothole right in front of my driveway that makes it so that I cannot back out quickly. Um, so I have to kinda ease out. It feels like I'm playing Russian roulette every time I back out of my driveway because of the blind spots. And so I'm mostly looking for solutions. You know, a lot of things have passed through my mind. There's no yellow curbing at all on that section of the street, except at the end where you get to the stop sign, there's about six feet of yellow curb. But there's no yellow curbing on either side of the driveways for any of the houses. And I'm, I'm not, I don't think I'm the only one having this problem because the only solution I've been able to find, and I think this is part of what might be contributing to the, the, the density of parked cars. My neighbors just to the south of me are no longer using their driveway. They park all of their cars on the road. I think they're having the same issue with visibility. Because the only solution I could come up with was to also park my car on the road. And there's no room. And so I called the police last night, the dispatcher, and said, would I get ticketed if I block my own driveway? And they told me, no, I would not. So that's what I've started doing. I park in front of my driveway instead of in my driveway. And that's like kind of the temporary solution. But I'm coming to the city council to see if maybe there's a more permanent solution. Maybe the repair of the pothole. If the city doesn't, can't afford to repair it, can I repair it myself? The other thing would be the possibility of painting yellow curbs, maybe three feet on either side of the driveways to reduce the amount of density. Uh, a third possibility, and this one might be out of reach, cars do tend to drive fast even though they've got a stop sign right before they enter that part of the street. I would love a speed bump in the middle of our street. It would be fantastic. You can put it right in front of my house if you want. So, um, anyway, those were things I thought of, but obviously you folks are more experienced, you're more knowledgeable of the city and the ordinances. And so I'm, I'm just looking for solutions so that I can keep my family safe.
There any? Do you have anything?
No, Mr. Wild left me a voicemail earlier today, but, uh, when I called back, I didn't get him, so I did not know about this. Um, I, we can certainly look at the pothole. We don't paint yellow curbs at people's residential driveways because there are 6,000-plus driveways in town and we couldn't maintain that. I think, uh, we can certainly look at, um, uh, the pothole, but I'm not sure, uh, it's a, it's not a good location for a speed bump. I will have to tell you, fire departments hate speed bumps, uh, cause they have to slow down so much and-
And the police are right down the street. They probably wouldn't like that either.
Police hate them, but not quite as much as fire, um, but, but pretty close. So, um, uh, I think we can look at that, but I'm not sure what we can do about neighbors, um, or the speeds other than to try and monitor it. I'll tell you, we're tight on police right now.
I understand.
Not able to do a lot of, of speed monitoring, but someday hopefully we will. But definitely the pothole.
Okay, cool. Can I, can I request a fire hydrant in front of my house? I know, that's a huge ask, right?
They're, they're kinda spendy.
All right.
Thank, thank you so much for-
All right. Thank you so much. And, um, Nancy, would I, or Ms. Ms. Brewer, would I follow up with you on the pothole or, or?
Actually, you can talk to Jason Williams right there and get his card.
Okay, great.
He's our public works director.
Okay.
He does a better job filling potholes than I do.
Excellent. He probably would do it better than me as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next gentleman, Keith Murphy.
Hi. I kinda changed my criteria. There's an unmarked pickup, uh, that the police have-
Is the microphone on?
There's an unmarked poli- police car that the, or pickup that the police have. And they've been using it to, uh, get tickets, give tickets. And I don't know if you're still using it or not, but it's not used, it's not supposed to be used for that. It's, uh, supposed to be used for, uh, drug, uh, catching drug paraphernalia and, and things like that. Uh, I've seen it several times. I haven't seen it lately. And, uh, I'd like to know the reason why they use it for giving out tickets. That's not what it was originally used for. If you're that hard up for money, you need to do something else.
We do not have an unmarked pickup truck out there giving tickets. So if that's going on, please call us, cause it's impersonating a police officer.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, we don't have, um, an unmarked pickup truck out there giving tickets.
Oh, you got rid of it?
Never had one.
Well, if somebody had one.
Well, next time you see it, give us a call. Cause, uh, it's obviously someone that is not employed by the Lebanon Police Department.
Yeah.
Every single vehicle I have is, is marked besides mine and a few others. And the ones that are not marked are used for other issue, uh, other, other things.
Well, somebody's been giving out tickets in it, so. Okay, thank you. And I understand that, uh, Seven Oaks is gonna be added on to. Is that correct?
They have filed an application to expand, yes.
Well, we voted that down. We voted all the, no school is gonna be adding on to.
Nope. Take that up with the school district.
They meet here tomorrow night, I believe, at 6 o'clock.
Yes, they do.
I'm sorry.
The board, the school board meets here tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. That would be the body to address that with. We do not pay for school district, uh, improvements. This is a city council.
How did they go over our head?
I, that, that'd be a question for the school board. I don't think that, I don't have enough information to be able to tell you if they went over our head or not.
Okay, well. Okay, I have one more then. This, this is on, um, page one of four, January 11th, 2023. It says, Gamil Nasser provided an update on the farm worker housing apartments for general public, low-income residents. He spoke about various projects that he would like to see in the city. They started out saying that there was only gonna be, uh, I believe, four of those apartment complexes. There are now about eight. So my question to the City Hall- So my question to the City Hall is, who gave the permits to get, allow eight of those part-time farmworkers? There's not that many farms anymore. Where are they getting, where are they getting, there's that many farms for that many people that can't speak English?
I can address that, because I was on the planning commission.
Okay.
The very first apartment building that was built was specifically a farmworker's housing apartment. The rest of the apartments that were built were applied and approved by the planning commission and city council, and they're just low-income. They have nothing to do with farmworkers, as far as
Just the one building.
It's just the one building that's a farmworker's housing. Does that make sense?
There's two that's ready.
Right, yeah, there'll be, there'll be a number of apartment buildings, but there's only one that's designated for farmworkers. The others are low-income housing.
And that only has 24 years.
They're all low-income.
Correct.
And they're for farmworkers?
No, just, just the one.
Just the one building.
Yeah, just the one building designated for farmworkers. The rest of them are reserved, or not reserved, but they're dedicated towards low-income families.
Okay. And I'd like for you to do me a favor. I know you probably are going to, I hope. You know, we're, what, $50 million in debt? Try not to spend any more money on property. We're not, we're not going to get out of debt. And, you know, these contractors that they've been getting in the last years, they get one contractor. And they're supposed to have at least three contractors to bid. And they haven't been doing that. And I'd like to see somebody at least check out these contractors, because they haven't been going according to the state law.
We'll take that in advisement.
Somebody would do that.
Thank you so much for your comment.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
The next up is Jeremy Gunther. I probably butchered your last name, and I apologize.
That's all right. Hello, everybody. Several of you guys know me. Jeremy Gunther, I live here in town. Like many of you, I was in the military, deployed overseas. And I'm a huge supporter of the police force. I believe it's absolutely essential to any town. However, I've noticed a trend taking place across America that's a little concerning. Fortunately, we're a small town, so it's not really hit us very hard here yet. But the trend of police enforcing illegal laws, specifically things like red flag laws, and citizens are using their rights and defending themselves with lethal force, and police are dying. The police were in the wrong. The killings were good. Generally, the citizens die too, so I mean, you never know how it ends up, how it ends up. But we don't want to see our police in that situation. That's a really bad situation for both sides of the aisle. And we've had a few incidences here in Lebanon that, well, I don't think they rise to that level by any means. They do cause me some concern. We had our police participate in the illegal mask mandate with the school board's request. And there's another example here. I actually brought two documents with me, two copies of this. Happened about a year ago. The police responded to a negligent discharge of a guy in an apartment building. Bad deal. Everybody who's ever handled firearms knows negligent discharge is really, really horrible. Still a mistake, still bad. My problem is the response that was given to that. So the police responded to this. It sounds like they had a hard time getting a hold of this guy. A lot of stuff. In the end, the police decided to seize all of this man's firearms and ammunition from his house. Now, had this been a car accident, which is a much more lethal thing in America, car wrecks take more lives than firearm incidents, they would not have confiscated all of the cars that the man owned. So they're taking all of his right to self-defense. When I called the police chief, he said that they had contacted the man's relatives to take ownership of the weapons, which means that they knew that they did not have any right to those weapons. It means that they were probably legally owned. They weren't stolen. There was nothing like that. Now, obviously, he couldn't give me all the details. This was another private citizen. However, based on the flash alert that was written, this concerns me a great deal. Either we have a flash alert here that was written very, very poorly, and make the police look very bad, or we have an overreach where a man's personal self-defense options were completely taken away from him. Either way, we're a small town. I would just like some oversight for the city council to look into this issue, make sure that things were handled correctly. Because if we go down this path too far, it's really, really bad. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you. The chief and I talk regularly about a lot of different issues that pertain to law enforcement. We will probably have a little discussion on this one, too. Just to educate me more about that situation, and to see if it met all the protocols that they needed to meet, so.
Yes, that's wonderful. I think that our police should feel the full support of the community in doing their job. They should not be pressured by the state to enforce on us things the state wants and things that we, the citizens who hired them, do not want.
Well, thank you so much. Just a reminder, for the people giving comments, make sure we stick to the five-minute. I guess it was the way I was brought up. I hate to cut people off, but we need to stick to the five minutes, so we can make sure the meeting moves along. So. Next person up is Teresa Newman.
Hi, I just want to verify, too. After 45 years, this is only my fourth time here. Are the, is the next, 5:00 was open to the public?
Yes, it was. There's just no comments during that work session, so you can listen all you want.
On the calendar, then, the next one, February 22, 22nd, is not open to the public? It is?
It's a work session.
And March 8 is? Okay. So, welcome, Mayor Jackola. I speak for many when I say we are really excited about the positive direction that we believe you've promised to take Lebanon. Unfortunately, the facts are, for me personally, Lebanon is growing, and yet our local newspaper's been disbanded, forcing us to rely on the Democrat Herald, not friendly to conservatives for our news. And with growth comes a natural rise in crime, and yet our jail unfortunately shut down. And we only have two policemen on the force, if I understand that correctly. We're growing, yet we have to go elsewhere to get our driver's licenses, because the DMV is closed. Dilapidated RVs owned by, I don't know, drug addicts, who knows, consistently use our streets as permanent parking. And a trip to Walmart today by the new locum subsidized housing, replete with Spanish murals, illustrates why it feels to me like there's an increasing second world feel to Lebanon. It's discouraging. Which is why Cassie Cruz's comments last year about her being most proud of putting Lebanon on the map for LGBTQ recognition, done on the taxpayers' dime, I might add. It was just incredulous. Seriously, with all the other issues we should be addressing, that have nothing to do with race or gender, like fentanyl overdoses, medical staff shortages, and inflation. Not only is the LDA's preoccupation with LGBTQ recognition misguided, and the least of our worries, it's also a mindset that doesn't reflect the majority of residents in our community. The reality is, in the span of a mere two to three years, the formerly safe, optimistic, strong, middle-class vibe here in Lebanon, I feel, is gone. I've been here 45 years. How did this happen? Radical progressive policies have culturally pushed the frontiers of perversion, have made us progressively godless, progressively poorer, have made our streets progressively more dangerous, our youth progressively more drug addicted, our children progressively less educated and more confused, our families progressively more dysfunctional, and our nation progressively more divided and more vulnerable to our enemies. The progression of homelessness is unequivocally out of control. Why? For starters, the nation's one-size-fits-all housing-first model rejects all accountability. It's crazy. No sobriety, no expectations of even the most basic of standards of behavior and cleanliness, and no expectation of work, ever. Established in 2013, this model promised to end homelessness in a decade, and yet today, the homeless and communities around them are perishing in record numbers. The few success stories we can point to have one thing in common: mental issues and drug addictions were addressed and treated. And with subsequent accountability, the homeless found self-respect through work. Sanity demands that we solve our problems quickly, make appropriate changes, and learn from our mistakes. I'm not blaming anyone here at all, and no, we can't blame COVID, as many are apt to do. The pandemic didn't cause our crises. How the government mishandled it caused them. In hindsight, it was the outliers who proved to be right. Leaders who refused to implement draconian lockdowns in their communities, right here in Oregon. They refused to do it. And even now, as our constitutional freedoms are being threatened, there are sheriffs who are pushing back on gun restrictions. As for the surge of subsidized housing being constructed in Lebanon, we were told in this room last month, in December, that some of those decisions were made as a result of state and national laws and regulations. Yet, we have the example of Democrat Mayor Edward Lambert of Fall River, Massachusetts, a suburb of Boston, who wants support to tear down 100-unit subsidized housing complex, because the tenants brought with them, quote, "more police cars, police calls, more crime, and more drugs." There are cities willing to think outside of the box and buck failed progressive policies, such as in Oakland, California, where a city-funded nonprofit program run by Downtown Streets Team gives stipends to homeless residents to pick up trash around the city. Here's what formerly homeless Rashina White, resident in Oakland, said, quote, "Once I let my pride go, the program changed my life and my whole outlook and perspective. I work about 60 hours a week now, two jobs. I've come a long way." I think Nair bin Laden, referring to the progressive global power base trying to control every community, not just here, but in the world, said it best when she said, quote, "The world's elite utopia is our dystopia."
Let's finish it up. You're, over your five minutes.
So I hope together we can commit to reversing this damage. God bless you. God bless Lebanon, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Like I said, just a reminder, five minutes. I find it really hard to cut people off, but it never was 10 minutes, sir. I don't remember when it was 10 minutes, so. The next one is Garth Rylands.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Be able to talk here. It's my first time doing this, and I'm relatively a new citizen here, about nine months.
Well, welcome.
Glad to be here. I'm here because of the caretaker's security position out at 47 South Saniam Highway, where my wife and I currently reside. And we're just looking, I wanted to offer up some thoughts on that. And first, I wanted to say, this is kind of, one thing you'll find out about me, I'm not a speechwriter. So hopefully, you can can get, understand what I'm trying to say. But so we do have a complete septic system approved, and a well on site, and a garbage service weekly. We're not homesteading, so. We are, well, let me just go on. I wanted to share a few details of what we do out there as caretakers. One morning at 3:00 AM, a motorhome pulled up in the driveway. So I went out with my dog, and as I was walking towards the gate, I heard somebody walking down our side of Crowfoot Road, right on the other side of the fence, the security fence. And he was talking, but I didn't realize he was talking to me. He was saying, so he, I was heading towards the gate, he was heading towards the gate. He came over, and my dog was going crazy. But, I mean, I was in a safe position. I wasn't worried about it. But anyways, he said that he was out trying to get some gas from somebody down the street at 3:00 in the morning. And the thing was, is what I think he was doing was looking for an opportunity to get either under the fence, which would be really the only real good option, because there's barbed wire at the top. But anyways, I asked him to leave, told him he needed to get down the road. And so twice, I asked him, and then he did leave. So that was one incident. Another thing I've done, I've hauled off, excuse me, shopping carts. I took one back to Walmart, one back to Safeway. I've taken a load of debris that was left outside the fence on the east end to the sweet home, to the dump out there. I also keep the perimeter around the outside of it on Crowfoot Road and Highway 20. I kind of patrol that and take care of that also. And I also maintain the inside of the property by mowing and weed whacking. And I've been able to meet my neighbors on the other side of Crowfoot, and then one neighbor on the same side that we are. And I've had no, no bad response about us living there as caretakers and so forth. I just wanted to read a text real quick. I'm going to be short on all my stuff. I know what it's like trying to run a meeting, and everybody's, and you don't want to shut them off. Hold on a second. Oh, sure.
Well, you have a minute 24, so.
Oh, okay. I better hurry. Sorry about that. Wasting my time. You know what? I'm just going to tell you. You'll have to take my word for it. This was just last night. We were able to park our car over across the street while our driveway is being paved today, going into the RV storage. Anyways, I told him I was coming here and stuff, and told him kind of what it was about, and I didn't solicit anything from him. And he just said, hey, you know what? That place needs somebody over there. And that was his words, not mine to him. So also, I've met the other neighbors. Again, I've had four, four different neighbors talk, and none of them complained about. They were actually happy to have someone there to watch over the place.
You got less than 30 seconds.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, anyways, I just, I'll wrap this up real quick. So I've known Dave and Laura for just almost a year now. And for people that have a love for this community, have actually raised here, Dave was, for sure, I know. And he would never do anything as a businessman to make Lebanon look less than what it is. I'm really fond of him. And anyways, so I hope that you can find in favor of his stuff. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thanks.
Next up is Jeremy Wells.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I've got my stopwatch going, so we're good.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all for your service. This isn't easy, dealing with the public and getting comments, and you're doing a great job. Several Sundays ago, getting home from church, I live on 490 West B Street. My house is backed up right next to the Four Square Church. I noticed that there was a new RV down the road a little bit toward A Street. And I looked at my son, who's 14, and I said, you know, I hope that RV Class A motorhome moves on quickly. At 5:00 AM, we awoke to three explosions, two smaller explosions and one larger explosion. And upon looking out the window, we could see that that RV was on fire, shooting probably 35 to 40 feet of fire in the air. The fire The fire department used the hydrant on my property, which is what it's there for, so great that it works. But that's how close it was to my house and my kids. This was not a nice Class A motorhome. I have a nicer Class A motorhome. It was very dilapidated at best. I go for runs around the community, and within a 10-block radius of my home, there's probably between seven and nine Class A motorhomes that are parked on the side of the streets. I do believe that it is a public safety nuisance for the community members and residents of Lebanon. If that RV was making any type of drugs inside of it, and with those explosions, that put the entire neighborhood at risk of contamination and jeopardized the health of my kids and the other kids that are in our area. I know that this is just something that I was just really passionate about. I wanted to make sure that I came and was able to express to you the concerns that I have around the RVs that we have in the neighborhood. I know that law enforcement, when I have had to call in the past around campers parked in front of my house, you know, churches are a magnet for homelessness and for RVs and for dilapidated vehicles. I've been very impressed with the law enforcement. They've done a great job in responding. Unfortunately, I believe that the situation is only getting worse now that the Walmart parking lot security is pushing out all of those RVs. So now, it's kind of compounded the situation for residents in the city. So I'm not gonna go on more about it. I know there's a very limited amount that you can do, but just my experience of waking up to explosions. And the third explosion was the largest explosion, and on inspecting the vehicle later on the morning, the propane tank was still intact. So I don't necessarily know what would make the three explosions if it wasn't something that was probably questionable in my mind. So that's really all I have, so giving you two minutes back almost. Thank you.
Hey, Jeremy, I got your email, and drove by there today. Did you happen to notice how long that RV was there before anything happened? Was it there the day before?
So the RV pulled up on a Sunday, sometime on a Sunday, and it exploded at 5:00 a.m. on Monday. The carcass of that vehicle was just removed three days ago, so it's.
There was no connection to that RV that's parked in that?
It was right across from it.
Close, but it's not the same people. It was somebody transient, you assume?
I'm gonna assume that generally folks run in packs with who they know, so.
There's still an RV in that yard, right?
Yes, it is. And it was the explosion, the RV was pulled up directly next to it. I'm shocked that more damage wasn't done to that RV. But yes, that is the exact spot.
Okay.
And thanks for taking my email. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Last one will be Linda Zidrick. I probably butchered your name, and I apologize. How do you pronounce it exactly?
My name is Linda Zidrick.
Okay.
I live at 412 East Ash Street. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. I sent you all an email about a really bad tree pruning job in front of my house, and I included some pictures. I could give you a whole slideshow. Besides those two trees, I found three badly-pruned trees on Hyatt and one big bush up East Ash that was badly pruned. Even beginning gardeners know that you don't leave stubs, that you don't cut into the branch collar, that you sharpen your saw, that you don't gouge trees randomly, and these employees apparently didn't know that. Ms. Brewer told me that the city has hired a professional arborist and that that person is in charge of training and supervising the tree cutters, so I'm wondering what happened. I spent an hour on an orchard ladder trying to correct the damage that these people had done. Besides the disease and pests that are invited by this kind of damage, one thing that happens with such damage is that a tree will produce multiple branches where before there was one, which means that next year, I'm gonna be way up on that orchard ladder again trying to correct damage that these men did. This is for trees that didn't need pruning at all. These are well-behaved trees. They were bred for city life, and in the eight years that I've lived in this house, they have very seldom put out any branches that have been anywhere near in the way of pedestrians or vehicles. I check them routinely. Some people have asked me why I didn't respond. Tree pruners would be coming by, and I didn't because I did not plan to prune those trees because they did not need pruning. This has been the situation in past years, and no one has bothered the trees. A couple of times, very small cuts have been made, one or two, and those were by professional tree pruners. There was an outfit with a commercial sign on it that came by. And otherwise, those trees have been left alone, and they should have been left alone. Those trees were planted by former owners, the barbers, to beautify their house, but also to beautify the neighborhood, to beautify Lebanon, and I've tried to respect that gift to the community, and I would like the city to respect it also. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sounds like you already talked to Nancy, so we'll be, I know she looked into it. So I agree. You emailed me, if I remember right? Yes. Yeah. So we'll look into it and see what the issue was. Thank you so much for your comments.
Mayor, the person that signed up on Zoom to speak would like to talk down.
Oh. This is Laura? Is she on there? Or is she right here?
No, that's not Laura.
Oh, you're in person.
Yeah. Good evening, City Council. My name is Laura LaRocque, and joining me this evening is David Gelot. Our item is going to be coming up under Item 1 on the agenda, and I wanted to speak to that item quickly before that was discussed with the City Council.
So this wasn't part of public comments?
I did sign up online and register, so I'm.
For Zoom.
Okay. I wasn't aware there was two processes, so my apologies.
Yeah, that's to sign up electronically.
Okay. Great. I'm here, so do you mind if I speak?
Can she? Okay. Okay. I guess you can talk about it now.
Okay.
I was advised by the attorney, so.
Great.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. So Agenda 1 included tonight is a request for two amendments to the Minnesota Code and the Development Code. The first amendment is to allow caretaker dwellings to reside in recreational vehicles on sites. The site that David Gelot owns is on the corner. The caretaker spoke earlier this evening. However, the code amendment is to be applied citywide. So currently, recreational vehicles are limited with their use throughout town. The most example where you've probably seen them is in city parks, where those caretakers reside year-round in a city park to help maintain it and help address any safety or cleanliness items of those facilities. We're asking this evening for City Council to consider the use of those recreational vehicles for that same purpose, but on private property, specific to commercial or industrial or mixed use. Our proposal is limited to site-specific, open storage facilities. These facilities, when they don't have people living there on-site as a maintenance with crime the way it is today, it really is an opportunity that draws negative behavior to come out there. So the purpose would be have somebody in a vehicle that's watching over the site 24 hours a day, and during the day, performing maintenance routinely, just making sure the site's cleanly picked up, items are being addressed in a timely manner. The recreational vehicle and the purpose for that is the alternative, is you have to build a regular stick-built or manufactured home. Placement of those and the cost of those are pretty cost-prohibitive. Associated with those is required parking, which is paving. Most of those paving have to meet ADA standards, so when you start to add up all those cost and figures for a site, it's pretty cost-prohibitive, especially for a use that can be transitional in nature, meaning that it may be an open storage facility today, but it may be redeveloped in the future, and then you would have lost all that investment into that property, where the same purpose could be achieved in a much more economical situation with a recreational vehicle. Included in the staff's analysis that talks about that these can be safely occupied on a site, they can be connected to sewer, public, or septic systems. They can be safely connected to city water or a well. They could be a permitting process so that there's a way to make sure that the person who should be residing on the site is, through either driver's license, the VIN number, I guess, license plate is what I meant to say. So there is a very easy way to track these, to make sure that their sites are used appropriately, that the person supposed to be there is in fact residing there. Second part of the code amendment is for fence provisions. The state law recently changed and says that the City Council may impose a building permit for fences higher than six feet tall when they're wire, mesh, wood, something essentially not a really heavy load-bearing material. Currently, the Development Code is, I guess, out of date. It allows, it states that a building permit is required for a fence that's six feet tall. So what we're asking is to clean up the Development Code, at least raise that permit process up to what the state would allow is at seven feet or higher, or do away with it altogether because of building permit and the staff time that it takes to process those, inspect those, could be probably better spent in other types of more weight-bearing or safety standards-type materials. So I don't know how I'm doing on time. I'm trying to talk fast, so I stay within that five minutes.
I was confused if she was in the public comments or the regular session, and we kind of, that's why I was wondering about the time, but do you have additional comments?
I was just gonna turn it over to David in case you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, just real quick. When we bought that lot, there was a caretaker out there with Moose Lodge, and the crime was far, far less. And so when he left, I told him he was gonna have to leave when we tore down the Moose Lodge because it was not repairable. Then he left, and the crime went just through the roof. We removed shopping carts and trash, a bicycle, a motorcycle, two trailers, and I think three motorhomes. And sometimes I had to call the police department, and sometimes I dealt with it myself. Once, I was with another city employee, and him and I were able to catch a guy leaving his trailer there, and we were able to get him to leave and stuff. But it just doesn't seem to make sense to waste the police's time out there policing in the urban growth boundary when we have one of their officer on duty in town and they're running out there on a shopping cart complaint. It doesn't seem logical to me. I do hope that we can move this forward. This has been going on for quite a while, at least an answer one way or another to, as to what's best for the city. I mean, if that's not best for the city to have a caretaker out there, then we'll accept that. But I, from, you know, believe it is. I believe it's way better for the city. I believe it's better for the police department. One of the reasons we started that, Laura and I, is because we were talking to a police officer, and he was talking to us about how many RVs and trailers and stuff were parked in our city. We do that, you know, and that would be a, you know, good business and help the city at the same time, and so we've improved that lot considerably. I mean, there's a flag flying out there. Garth works out there all day, and I just, yeah, I just think it's a move in the right direction to approve that, and hopefully we can do it sooner than later. We just paved a driveway today, fencing's all up. Yeah, so that's where we're at. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. We're gonna move into regular session. We're gonna be talking about this right now, so.
Can I ask a question? Was it okay to ask a question of them?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
This is a commercial storage, right? You're gonna charge, it's not for your own stuff? I think that's the way it works. You're gonna pay rent to store your stuff there? Or is this for your own personal?
No, so this is actually commercial rental spots.
I just wanted to make sure.
But we do also have a real estate business here in town, and so we do store our, we have client trailers out there, and our clients are able to come and use those when they buy or sell a home, you know, it's kind of a service to the clients. And then we have a client appreciation shed out there where clients that have bought real estate with us can check out blowers and pressure washers to improve their homes and stuff, so it's kind of a dual purpose.
And you put the fence up?
Yes. Yep. And it's all, it's privacy fence, so it meets all the standards, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move into regular session. Discussion on caretaker dwelling units and fencing, presented by Kelly Hart, the Community Development Director. Hi, Kelly.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry I couldn't be present with you tonight, but I'm a little bit under the weather, so we're gonna make it through. So Laura and Dave kind of did a great job setting the stage of what the request is for tonight. At the November City Council meeting, the request was formally made to the City Council for the two items that were just identified, for the request to do a recreational caretaker dwelling and to amend the code for the fencing purposes. At that council meeting, the request was first up to bring back the item at a future meeting with some additional information. So from there, we got together at the staff level to include input from the Building Department, Engineering, the Fire Department, and the Planning Department as well to sort of talk through each of the items and identify some potential issues and how those might be able to be mitigated, and a potential permitting process to address the request if the council wanted to move forward with it. So first and foremost, the request is to have recreational vehicle associated with outdoor storage facilities. At the staff level, we would interpret that as outdoor storage facilities that do not have a primary use structure. So the interpretation would be, if you are already doing construction on the site or you already have a building on the site, you should be able to modify those in a manner to provide a permanent caretaker dwelling. So this type of a proposal for the recreational vehicle would be limited to just facilities that don't have those primary structures. That is how staff has interpreted the request. If council wants to look at it, it a wider option that is at your discretion. In terms of how recreational vehicles are currently permissible in the city as dwellings, as identified, we do have park hosts within a couple of our city parks that are recreational vehicles. Per state law, we're required to allow them in manufactured homes, manufactured home parks. Recreational vehicles are allowed to be used as dwellings, and then we also allow it purely on a temporary basis through a temporary permit on residential dwellings after 45 days per calendar year. So we do have a situation where we do allow recreational vehicles in certain circumstances in the city to be used as dwellings. When it comes to the areas that we considered, there was a couple of things. Recreational vehicles are truly transitory-type vehicles. They are not meant or built as permit primary residences, and so with that comes situations such as sewer considerations, the way that a recreational vehicle has to dispose of its sewer is through a pipe, and if that pipe is connected appropriately to a discharge, it's fine. If it's not connected or discharged appropriately, you could get incidental discharge, which could cause site contamination with sewage. Or if the pipe is permanently connected to a sewer source, that pipe can corrode and then again cause that incidental discharge. Through that, we talked through some staff considerations about how to require certain types of connections to a septic system or the city's sewer system, and then basic maintenance, which could be tied to a permit. So we believe that those concerns can be mitigated. On the Fire District side of the equation, their code is set for buildings and structures, and so they have no authority to provide any sort of fire suppression requirements associated with recreational vehicles. And so for that, we don't really have a mitigation beyond the fact that recreational vehicles are already required to have egress windows, smoke detectors, and fire extinguishers on site, but it cannot be addressed with regular building fire suppression requirements. And so that's one area that we do not have mitigation for. The city can choose to try to implement its own standards for. The city can choose to try to implement its own standards for recreational vehicles for fire suppression. We have not done that before. That's been outside of our scope. And so if that is something that the city council wants us to look into, we'll have to do some additional research of how that would work and what that would look like in concert with the fire district. And then for the use restriction, we want to make sure that the RV dwelling is truly just a dwelling. Traditionally, when you do have self-storage facilities, you have a onsite office and an onsite manager. And it's that manager who then is residing in the dwelling as well. With the RV itself, it can't be a commercial use because once you turn it into a commercial use, you need to be ADA requirements. And you need to make sure that you have appropriate access and restroom facilities which cannot be provided by its nature in a recreational vehicle. And so that again, can be mitigated through an appropriate permitting process. And if it is violated or we identify that a violation occurs, we have a standard co-enforcement procedure that we would go through to ensure that those actions cease or again, a building is then built for an onsite manager and caretaker dwelling. And then some final considerations on the caretaker side of the equation. When it comes to permitting, some of these items that we've identified in terms of considerations and mitigation are associated with the fact that the caretaker dwelling would be transitory and, and could be changed out from one caretaker to another. We are assuming that some would bring their own RVs onto the site and so they're changed over. And so the sewer connections can be different. And so based off of that, that action of it being more transitory, we would make the suggestion that if council wanted to consider pursuing this, that it would not necessarily be a permanent authorization, but it would be tied to the recreational vehicle itself. And, and a time permit on it so that the city could then re-inspect to make sure that we're not creating any contamination issues or, or site issues. And so there, the suggestion would be for it to be a temporary permit maybe for a period of six months. And, and then we would be able to go in and re-inspect it back. So these are options as it directly relates to the caretaker for onsite security purposes. I do also want to, I guess, remind this council that, I think it was within the last year or so, we did also expand the security options for outdoor storage facility types to include electric fences, which could also provide a security deterrent. And so we have already expanded the code for security purposes. This would be an additional expansion for that as well. If council wanted to do so. We can leave it there and have a council discussion of how you'd like to move forward with the caretaker or I can also provide a quick summary of the fencing. To move forward with that, but.
Can you repeat that last portion? You kind of faded out there.
I'm so sorry. Um, so about a year or so, within the last year, year and a half, a request was presented to the city council to provide additional security options for outdoor storage type facilities. And that was specifically for electric fences. And so we did amend the municipal code to allow for electric fences as alternative security measures for outdoor storage facilities. If there's not an onsite manager or even with an onsite manager, it was just an additional security option that was available. So we have provided an expansion of, of security measures for, for these types of facilities as well.
Okay, is there any questions from council?
I, I think what Kelly was asking, if she wants, if we want her to go on to the fencing part before we talk about. Right?
Yes, that's it. So I could just do the fencing part really quick if you would like, and I'm so sorry. The fencing thing is, is really quick. We did adopt the, the structural code. We just did all of our building code amendments in January. And so the city recognizes the new addition of the structural code. And so the structural code would preempt anything in our development code, which means that we already allow for fences seven feet or less without a permit at this point. And so I don't think there's any action we need to do on the fencing side of the equation. We'll just, as part of regular code cleanup procedures, modify the development code to be more clear when we do those in the future. But I don't think there's anything specific we need to do right now. And that's, that's all I have on that one.
Any questions?
The, the question I have in, I want to point out, I think this particular project sounds like a great fit. But I don't, I'm, what my concern would be is what we'd be opening up to somebody else by passing this. There could be a property that was far less qualified or comfortable to do this in. The permitting part, that makes great sense, but how do we word it so that I don't decide in my backyard, I want to put a couple and and call it an RV storage because I rented out to somebody else?
I share that same concern.
I think it's zoning based. You can't put an RV storage in residential areas, so that, that right there will clean that part up. Right, Kelly?
Yes, Jerry, thank you. That will clean that part up. We can also, I mean, part of this discussion is, you know, number one, generally does council support the, the concept? If so, what are your concerns so that we can then draft code or a permitting procedure that would address those concerns? And so if your concern is related to visual aspects, we can require, if you are gonna do it, there's gonna be fencing or some sort of a, a site inspecting opportunity for it. You know, we could go through what those concerns might be and how we might address them in a permitting procedure. Which we can then represent to planning commission and the city council as part of a code amendment.
I think the largest concerns that I had when you went through the staff report were really, again, making sure that there's a requirement for sewer. I do have that fear of, you know, accidental discharge. And then is there a way we can ask Lebanon Fire District for some sort of mechanism to require statute for fire suppression on RV dwellings? What that looks like, I don't know. Maybe it's just that they have to have a, what am I thinking of? A fire extinguisher in the, in the RV. Is that something we can ask them to do? I know that I don't, I don't think this body wants to take that on, especially if we've never done that before, but.
In, in my conversations with, with, at the staff level, it included a representation from the Lebanon Fire District. From their interpretation, RVs are, are not structures, which means it's outside of the scope of any code that they're able to implement. And so it's outside of their scope. Again, from my understanding, RVs already have to have appropriate ingress, egress windows for, for the dwelling, for the bedroom side of it. They already have to have smoke detectors and I believe that they have to have fire extinguishers. At the city level, as part of a permit, we could put in a requirement that there has to be a fire extinguisher outside of the RV that's accessible from, you know, outside of it rather than locked behind a door if somebody wants to try to fight a fire outside of that. But I'm not quite sure what that would do. But we could do something like that at the city level. I, I don't believe that there's anything we can do at the fire district level though.
Okay, it was worth the ask. I think I'm fine, I guess, without that as long as we have, again, that requirement for sewer in some capacity for that. And you mentioned a temporary permit at six months. So what does that look like every six months for you know, someone that chooses this route for their storage facility?
We haven't worked that all out yet because we wanted to make sure that's something that council wanted to, to pursue first. Generally speaking, I think it would be a requirement for them to come in and get a new permit file, like the new paperwork, which is not onerous. And then probably have an inspection from our building official to make sure that the permit is meeting requirements and for sewer purposes and anything else that we add into it.
I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn here, but six months, an inspection every six months seems like an awful lot. But I, I defer to the rest of council to see where they feel about that.
Awful lot timeframe wise?
Too often, excuse me.
To me, that seems a little heavy handed. I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out the concern between if a caretaker switches, like one RV pulls out, the other one pulls in, what's trying to figure out what concerns we're actually addressing there because people pull in and out of Gil's Landing, you know, on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. We don't, we don't go and do an inspection on their RV or their, you know, or their fire, lack of fire protection. So I'm just wondering what the difference is in this case.
Could the permit be for, if it's the same, if it's the same RV, but if it changes, it have to re-permit?
Well, I'm just wondering what the, what the alarm goes, like is, should we be alarmed that people are switching out in that spot or just I don't see the concern, I guess. For, you know.
Making sure they have got sewer and water hookups. That's different than just pulling in, staying at Gil's Landing and then leaving and going and dumping gray water somewhere. If they're, I think on an annual basis would be good unless it's, unless vehicles switch out. And then it has to be re, re-permitted for the new vehicle.
Well, I guess I'm, I understand basic RV septic and I don't, I'm, I'm, I, I can't figure out why one RV wouldn't be able to dump in the same hole the other one does because.
I think it's more a question of is, is their connection to that good enough?
Correct.
If it's mechanically good enough.
And, and I just would interject, we do have a caretaker at Gil's Landing, so when a new RV pulls in, the caretaker is there making sure they're getting connected. And in this case, there, we wouldn't have a caretaker there. So you treat out RVs, how do you make sure that the new one is connected correctly?
I, I don't know. I just, it just seems like we're overthinking it because there, you'd have to be absolutely crazy not to connect your sewer to a septic tank or city sewer from your RV because it's gonna fill up and make a mess on you and you're, you're living here. I mean, it just seems like we're overthinking a little bit.
So I think.
I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for making sure, like, I would, I agree with everyone else in the fact that we, uh, septic and water is absolutely necessary. That's, that's the big problem we're trying to address here is making sure we don't have, you know, someone just dumping their refuse on the, on the ground. But beyond that, it seems like we're making it more difficult than it should be.
So I think the basic thought, if I may, the, the basic thought behind the, the time period and the inspections were to ensure that number one, incidental spills, right? So that if you are gonna keep your hose connected on twenty-four, seven basis, that it's connected appropriately. And because we don't have a caretaker on site. And number two, the, if a hose is left out for a day in and day out in the weather, when it's not traditionally meant for it to do that, that could create cracking, that could create breakage. And that can result in incidental spills. So making sure that the system is, is A, connected appropriately and B, in a condition in which it's not going to create that spill. That's where the thought process came into play. That being said, it's, it's at council's discretion how they would want to move forward with something like this.
I think the requirement of the water sewer is there, I would venture to guess that, I mean, for me personally, I think it's a year. I think, you know, if you have a business and you have a caretaker on it and that caretaker spills sewage on your property, you're probably gonna handle that at the business level, I would imagine. And if not, I would, I, I mean, we're also complaint driven too, I know for enforcement, so you know, there's someone that's dropping off their RV and look, there's a pile out here of things that should not be there. So that, that mechanism is still open for us of discharging of sewer where it should not be. Does anyone else have any thoughts on this?
I think I've expressed mine. I think a year sounds reasonable, but I would want to see a mechanical connection that was safe. Yes, it could, it could leak. It could leak at Gil's Landing, but the environmental impact of that, I think we should have a handle on. We should know that. And if, if it changes out to another RV, I think that one should have to be re-permitted by being sure that they're connected properly. I think that's just prudent.
Yeah, I agree. I would encourage us when, or when this is, comes back to us to keep the, the permitting fees as low as possible too.
I don't think it's supposed to be.
Throwing that out there.
Come source for it.
No, I just wanted to say it out loud, so. I have nothing else to offer here.
If, if, if we think the permitting is necessary, then I, I would say a year is years, a lot better than six months. I mean, every, every time someone has to go into city halls, you know, we're causing inconvenience to some degree. And then there's an inspection that our staff's having to do, but if, if a year sounds good to you guys and everyone feels comfortable that we need that type of permitting, I'm, I'm on board.
I agree with that.
Seems reasonable. So what are we gonna do tonight?
I think that was all we needed for tonight. And Kelly will start working on code language. That will go to planning commission and then to the council.
Thank you.
That concludes that one. Thank you so much. Next discussion on council resolutions presented by Nancy Brewer.
Hi, thank you. At the November meeting, councillor Gamal Nassar raised the question about whether or not council would like to pass resolutions in lieu of a mayoral proclamation. This came about after Mayor Aziz stopped issuing proclamations. The police department came through with a resolution recognizing September eleventh as Patriot Day, nine eleven flag of honor day. And so the question kind of arose of, of is a council voted on and adopted resolution, a direction this body would like to take. The council at the time said, didn't want to make a decision in November with a new council coming on board and asked this council to take up that issue and discuss what your preferences are. I will note, just from a staff perspective, if the council decided they wanted to pursue council-driven resolutions, we would want some assistance with what you expect staff to do there. Are we helping craft? Are we editing? Are we formatting? Is it something where a councillor would place it on the agenda and deliver a finished resolution for staff to put in the council packet? And, and that councillor would give basically the staff report on it? Are you expecting something other than that? So it's really up for this body to discuss what you wish to do. The mayor has said he doesn't intend to re-initiate proclamations, so in, in the lieu of a mayoral proclamation, there could be a resolution or there could be nothing. So it's up for you to discuss.
It's, can you remind me, I, I was part of the, the nine eleven Patriot Day when we talked about that. How did that progress, like from start to finish?
So that was requested by staff in the police department. It was a request fired, filed with Mayor Aziz who agreed to put it on the agenda that way. So and that was basically in lieu of a proclamation, it would be a resolution. And that's really, I think, where that discussion started in was, was, was a resolution. And I, you know, some differences. A mayoral proclamation was read by the mayor. Council had no role in that. The resolution is voted on by the council. And short of breaking a tie, the mayor has no role in that resolution. So there is maybe a fundamental difference in how those two items are perceived in terms of, is it council support or is it mail, mayor's support and announcement? And I will say there are communities everywhere rethinking proclamations, resolutions. Whether, you know, a city flagpole has any flag other than the United States flag as, as various and sundry interests are, you know, desire to be put forward or not put forward. And, and so it's not unusual that, that this body would be having this conversation.
Well, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say one thing, just a little bit of, I did learn how to use Google, so. Actually, this comes from Sophie Knox, but a, just as a general, a general word of art, a resolution is a formal expression of opinion or intention made usually after voting by a city council. A proclamation is an official declaration issued by the town council to make something known, public and an official announcement. So that's kind of the generally accepted differences between what norm, you would normally think of as a, as a resolution versus a proclamation.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not gonna try and reopen the discussion from what happened certainly last year. But I think, you know, I think resolutions are an important part of government. I think they have value for our constituents. I think they, you know, honor certain organizations. They honor, they highlight causes or interests, celebrate historic milestones, like we were one of the seventy cities to be a part of the nine eleven flag of honor, America piece. I mean, that was, that was something special for Lebanon. But I also suspect that this group, this body is generally not as interested in taking up these. And I would love to get a little thumbs up or down to figure out where everybody is before I come up with other solutions. And I have kind of taken the lead on this conversation, understanding the mayor can't, you know, he's only a tiebreaker in these situations. These are resolutions of, of, you know, counselors for the most part.
My feeling on this is the mechanisms already are already in place, and this feels like it's trying to give me more weight to send a resolution than it does a citizen. Everybody has the right to do that. There's a process that goes through now. We vote on it. Why would, I, I don't understand why me doing that would be any different, doesn't mean I can't, I'm a citizen too, but I don't, I don't understand the, the aim of this, really.
And, and part of it is right, right now, so the way that the process would, would work under a proclamation would be someone would submit, you know, I'd like to have a proclamation declaring Alzheimer's Week. And they would submit it to the city recorder, who would send it to the mayor, do you want to proclaim this? And the mayor would say yes or no. If the mayor said yes, it went on the agenda. If the mayor said no, it didn't. People don't generally submit resolutions without going through that kind of vetting process. So, you know, the question then becomes, if anybody submits any resolution, do we put it in the packet for the council to discuss? Or is there some other vetting process in there? Or, and, and that may be, for example, that a counselor has to say, I would like to put that on the, on the agenda. I, you know, and, and have the council discuss that issue. And I would caution, if it's just, anybody can submit whatever they want, it goes in the packet and on the agenda, you're going to have some long agendas. Because in the summertime, there's a day of something for everybody. And, and we could end up with, I don't know, celebrating Police Week, Public Works Week.
There is National Lawyers' Day.
And we have done that in the past.
No lawyer days.
You know, we have had a National Police Week, or International Firefighters Week, and we've, you know, certainly Older Americans' Day, Americans with Disabilities Month, you know, Strawberry Festival, all of those things have been identified in, as things in the past that we've done. You know, it's, when I think about this as a way that we can avoid having, you know, two people come up here and ask for a proclamation versus the 60 that showed up last year, I was thinking, you know, well, how do, how do we avoid that? What do we do? And I think that for some individual counselors, we all have our, I'm going to call them passion projects, right? It's not, it wouldn't surprise me that Firefighters' Week got on the agenda because someone, maybe a former counselor that was sitting in this spot, requested it, that it be a proclamation or a resolution, you know, of council. So my hope is that as individual counselors, if we are not going to do these resolutions, that you engage with those groups and you deliver those speeches individually to those groups as a city counselor, not as council, but as a city council, counselor. And that also gives the mayor too, he, you know, I assume he would do the same thing if he was asked to open the Strawberry Festival Ceremony, for example. It's not a proclamation, but he's afforded that, you know, capacity to be there and open that as the mayor or council president, or, you know, maybe they chose, chose counselor workman to do that, whoever it may be. But that's kind of, when I was thinking about this, how do we move forward without, you know, where, where it's fair for everybody, where, you know, we have two people that show, or we have 60. And that was kind of my end result of my thinking. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that.
I missed or misunderstood the, what was your end result? It was.
Quite honestly, not doing resolutions.
Us going to, not doing resolutions, just individually.
If you, again, if you have something, yeah.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying.
You are a city counselor, you have constituents, you would appear as Counselor Jeremy Salvage and, and give that, you know, impassioned speech about how important firefighters are.
I got you.
Or how important the Strawberry Festival is.
So you're leaning more towards not a group resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'm not super opinionated one way or the other. I, it seems like doing council resolutions as a group, it would be, it could get.
Contentious.
Contentious, yeah. Well, that, that's the, that's the worst of it. I was going to say burdensome and like, how, how many of these will be, because I can't write a resolution on my own. Like, I'd have to help, I'd have to have these people help me to some degree, or someone, you know. Maybe, maybe I wouldn't use the city staff. But it just seems like we, and we could be inviting, playing favorites, you know?
Absolutely.
Because, because I bring this up and it gets voted down, and then someone else brings something in and they're like, well, yeah, let's, we like this. So then, you know, you're kind of isolating interest in the community as a group over just, I think what the mayor did was kind of be like, I don't make any proclamations, I'm not favoring anyone, and I'm not making anyone else feel less, less favorable.
And I think that's the issue with that, with the resolution.
Right.
Is that we are actually making a formal decision by the council, right? Proclamations don't necessarily have that. Proclamations are just, hey, here it is, you know? And, and yes, there's, somebody has to make that decision, or a group has to make the decision of which proclamations or no proclamations.
Yeah.
I think the use of resolutions, it, it, it doesn't offend me personally, but it somewhat offends me from kind of the understanding of what the purpose of a resolution is.
We saw a lot of that over COVID. We saw a lot of, you know, city counselors, our city councils take up an anti-mask resolution, which really did nothing. I mean, you, the reality is we answer to the state. We don't answer to, you know, we're, we get our authority from the state to exist as a city, correct? Thank you, Trey. So I also wanted to point out that by not doing that, it, it remains in line with what the mayor has chose, our new mayor has chosen to do. So it avoids, you know, any, it just keeps everybody on the same page.
I agree with that.
So then the idea would be not to do, we will not accept resolutions from the public and we will not sponsor our own resolutions for council, but instead engage, you know, as an individual city counselor with groups that, whatever you're passionate about or you're requested to engage with.
Basically, yeah, basically, nothing changes.
Nothing changes, correct.
Well, and honestly during.
Other than you have to write your own speech for a firefighter week if you're asked.
Firefighters' Week, I think.
Yes. Okay.
Well, and I don't think anything, you know, we have counselor comments, and, I mean, the counselors can read something during their counselor comments, but, you know, it just doesn't mean it's the proclamation of, or, you know, it hasn't been voted on and it's not an official position of the entire council, because only the entire council by vote can stake a position on anything. So.
Other than the contentious issue of last summer, how many resolutions and proclamations have we done? How many do we do?
A lot. You know, before last summer, I would say our agendas would have between two and four proclamations on, on each of them. And I also would say the vast majority of them had no one in the audience to hear that proclamation. So they would, they generally would timeout, so let's declare Older Americans' Week when it's National Older Americans' Week.
I promise, I don't need a proclamation to remind myself I'm older.
But someone requested that, and someone did think it was an important thing.
Requested, and it, and it went with events happening at the senior center, you know, during that week in terms of celebrating older Americans. But, but we didn't have an audience full of older Americans saying yay us. So, there you go.
And resolutions?
We've only had the one in my time here that, and, and it only came up, I think, because there weren't proclamations anymore.
Okay. I personally don't see the need for us to do resolutions or proclamations. I just, I, I agree with, with my learned counselor here, that, she's going to hit me now. If you want to go speak at something as a counselor, I, I agree with that. As a council, I don't know that it's our job to do that. I think we have other real world issues to deal with other than resolutions and proclamations. I, I don't, no one proclaims that I'm a nice guy.
I do disagree. I do think that resolutions are important, but I, I understand the lay of the land of where I'm at right now. And so this is, I think, you know, a good example is, you know, Colonia Pause. I was there when you gave a speech, you know, welcoming the group to the community. So that was something you did as an individual city counselor. They didn't ask for a proclamation, they didn't ask for a resolution. So that keeps that intact. So it's, if it's something you're passionate about, you can continue to do that as a counselor.
Right.
Yes, so.
I, I guess I would add, you know, people are probably sitting in the audience out there wondering why I'm not going to do proclamations. And I explained it to another council person tonight, that I look at them almost as an outdated product, that they, our communities have such a diverse family belief system with, you know, all the way from one side to the other. And for, you know, the, the product maybe in the past was used, I always use the coal mining town analogy, or example, I should say. You know, everybody kind of went to the same mine, they went down the tube, they worked, they all thought the same way, they all talk, you know, every day. That's not the case anymore. Lebanon is very diverse on belief systems. And to take a proclamation for one group, it tells me that I would have to take up to represent Lebanon, take up all proclamations. Now, people might say, well, that's ridiculous. Well, that's actual equality, okay? Representing all different points of view. I think it's better to treat everybody the same and not engage in that. And like I said, I'm, I'm kind of explaining for people that don't know, that's why I'm, I'm going with the no proclamations. Now, when it comes to resolutions, that's on, that's on the council. So, so, but yeah, that's my, that's my thought process on it. And now, of course, you know, if a council person wants to come in and, and like Michelle was talking about, talk about XYZ, whatever group, that's your right to do so. And, and, you know, we have time in the schedule for those type of things. So anyhow.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, we have consensus, and then we will not do resolutions moving forward.
Proclamations or resolutions, correct.
The mayor gets to decide what he wants to do on that. He can change his mind tomorrow.
That one's mine. Now, that could change, you know, whoever the next mayor is, that could change. But that's going to be my policy, is I'm not going to do them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next item?
Next item is me again. And it occurs to me, we haven't really talked about what I put in the city manager's report that's in your packet. It can look kind of long, and there are a lot of words there, but I will say there are, there are nuggets of good information. You get a good status of, in particular, development projects. This month, you have an annual report from the police department and from the community development department with some statistics from 2022 that I think is very informative. So when you have some time, peruse that and, and let me know. Reminder, next week on the 14th at 3:30 is the Fire Station Groundbreaking, 12th and Oak. It'll be, I think, a short thing, but grab your best, sweetheart, go on a lovely date, you know, romantic, fire department groundbreaking. But dinner afterwards, dinner afterwards. Anyway, just, they're a good partner for us in the community. I wanted to let you all know that we are going to be remitting, this is a statement that Governor Brown used, at the end of her sentence, or her sentence, her.
Freudian slip.
There's a little Freudian slip. At the end of her term, one of the things that she did was she required all local governments to remit or forgive sentences for citations prior to 2020 that had a suspended for failure to appear or failure to comply. They worked with DMV, who provided us the list of, of our people who had licenses suspended for failure to comply. It voided for us $21,455 in revenue. 27 people will get their licenses unsuspended as a result of that. This doesn't apply to suspensions for the same reasons for 2021, 2022, but, but for 2020 and pre, and, and previously. And this is something that all municipal courts across the state and county courts that have done similar suspensions for failure to appear, failure to comply have to do. At your place tonight, you have a little brochure from Know Before. This is the company we use for cybersecurity training. You're going to get probably one to two, maybe some months, three trainings on cybersecurity, since you have email on the city system. Most of them run a few minutes, some of them are going to be as long as 30 minutes. But if you're going to use our email, you have to do this training. It is part of the requirements that we have for trying to achieve mid-level cybersecurity insurance coverage for the city. We get phished a fair amount. You'll note on your email, you have a little icon with a little phishing hook on it. So if you have a suspicious email you get, if you click that, it sends the email directly to IT, and they can look at it and will let you know it wasn't phishing. You can, you can open it, or if it was phishing, you will see that it disappears from your inbox. And generally speaking, if you got it, other city employees will, so it will also disappear from all of their inboxes to make sure people don't open, click on links they shouldn't, and have us lose any kind of resources or time. Cybersecurity incidents continue to grow. Phishing are, is a good way for people to try and gather information from us and infiltrate our system and drop, well, let's just say it's a bad thing when it happens, right? So we don't want to lose the money, but more than that, what we're learning from other entities that have been hacked and have been held, for example, under ransomware is, yeah, the ransomware was $300,000, but we spent $6 million in staff time and hard dollar costs to get everything returned to normal. And we don't want to be in that place. We don't want to lose $300,000, we don't want to lose the $6 million in returning things to normal. So these are protections we're taking. Also, to let you know that as counselors, you will at some point in the year be required to take an online harassment training, sexual harassment training mostly. And then also, as a city counselor, you are a mandatory reporter for potential abuse to vulnerable populations, elder and youth. And so you'll have to go through those trainings as well as part of your role. These all come as an email from Human Resources. You get 30 days. Basically, they come out on the first of the month, you have until the end of the month. At about 15 days, if you haven't done it, you get an email reminding you at five days to the end of the month you haven't done it, you get another email. And then on the first of the month, you get your boss told that you haven't done it, and would you please make sure they do it, kind of a thing. So just letting you know, that's coming to an inbox near you at some point. And there you go. That's all that I have for comments. Thank you.
Okay, next item. Is there any items from council?
I just want to briefly note, because I saw it in the packet at the very end, that Officer Scott Barnes is leaving Lebanon Police Department. I mentioned this only because I know he was a homegrown officer, and like, I went to school with him, and he's, we're losing him to OSP, which is a huge bummer. But it's, you know, it is what it is. But I wanted to, if he can hear this later, I wanted to thank him for his service. And, and I can only imagine what it would be like being an officer in your hometown, and the challenges that you would face doing that, and thank him for his service, so.
I was going to say, I think it's because Frank was his FTO.
Any other items? Okay, any items? Would anyone from the public or press like to address council? Okay, next scheduled council meetings, February 22nd, 2023 at 12:00 PM, joint work session with Planning Commission. And then March 8th, 2023 at 6:00 PM, regular session.
Let me come back to the work session for a minute.
Yes.
I didn't know if anybody had any other questions that we didn't get to before we had to adjourn the work session, or if there is any direction you would like to give us on a particular site to include in a resolution for overnight sleeping. Any, any preference on the site, or do you wish us to look for something different, or do you want to point to something different that you'd like us to study, so that we know what to bring at the March meeting?
In other words, you guys got to make a decision at some point. You have to make a decision at some point and give us some direction.
None of it's ideal. I mean, it, none of, when I first saw it, I was like, these are the spots, you know? But really, what, what we're talking about is. are the spots, you know? But really, what, what we're talking about is a very temporary, it's a short-term, it's not like camping is allowed. This is to spend the night here, get it packed up, and, and move on. So I think what, the place that makes the most sense is right next to City Hall, to me. It's a wide enough sidewalk, and there's not a ton of traffic right there. And it's somewhat close to, I mean, it is downtown, it's close to the parks, and, which is also kind of a negative, too, for the people that live around Ralston Park to, you know, have increased activity there, but...
It's right outside Nancy's window.
But they should be gone by 7:00 AM.
So is, is, I don't know, it seems like the best option with what we have to work with.
I'm fine with that or the Public Works. I, I, I don't want it to be Ralston Park.
Or the, or the gas station.
I, yeah, I don't want it to be the gas, the Holiday House in Ralston Park yet, no.
I don't have a huge preference over that one or the Public Works one. I don't know what the ramifications for the Public Works guys are to have that there. But it might be a little less intrusive downtown, which I know that's, it's an eyesore whether we like it or not for our downtown.
Well, I know I'll be looking for some alternatives. So...
So, we would put it down there, and then we, where would we put the porta potty and hand wash station then? Would that be next to the doors, going out the side?
No, they're probably gonna be around the side of the building, on what would be the alley. I think there's a, there's a trash enclosure over there, so we'll have to look at where we would put those. Put them on the backside of the building even.
And that would be identified when it comes back to us, right? Okay.
Yeah, the, the City Works is not a good place. I mean, there's no real place to put a porta potty hand washing that's not open to public. And you have a lot of, you do have a lot of pedestrian traffic that goes up and down that street. And it will cause some problems there. I still think Holiday Station is the best place, because you get them off the road, you hit, you have room around the back of it, and you've got plenty of room for porta potties, hand wash station, out of the flow of the public. But nobody else likes that idea, because they like using the building too much. And it's, it's the same distance from the park as Nancy's office, so...
And the old water treatment is just ruled out. I mean, it wouldn't be worth improving that ground any to try to make that.
Oh, the one across, we're talking about.
The one, the one across from the wastewater treatment plant on Tennessee Road?
No, you're talking about the old water...
I'm talking about downtown.
Oh, the old water treatment plant?
No, it was in the, it was written in there.
You know, where the, where the wheel used to be.
Yeah.
Over the canal?
Between Second and...
Right, the old water treatment plant, which we are getting ready to demolish, so we'll be...
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
I missed that, sorry.
Yeah, so we'll be taking that down.
It looks like a good spot in the map.
I, I don't know how long demolition is gonna take to be able to look at whether that would be a spot at some point in the future that could be looked at.
I got you.
I know right now, we can't, we can't use it. There's so much kind of dangerous stuff inside that fence.
Okay.
Anything else?
Did we, did that answer? Did you get what you needed from my say yes?
Well, yes and no. The, the challenge that we're gonna have is, is we'll have to bring in a resolution that says we're naming a place. And at this point, I'm likely to say, we're gonna name the sidewalk on Maple Street by City Hall. And then y'all can amend that during the meeting and say, we would rather have it be XYZ location. I would say, if you have a better site or a different site you would like us to look at, it would be helpful if you let me know within kind of the next week what that site is, so that we could come to the meeting with, okay, the resolution says Maple Street by City Hall, but you asked us to look at the old water treatment plant, could it go there? We could come back and say, well, not now, but we expect demolition to be done by August 2024, and we could look at it then, for example. Or, you know, the site across the street from wastewater treatment plant, here's what it would take to make that site work, and, and what would be involved, so that you could consider it at that meeting.
Well, and if I may, we just need a solution before June. If we find something later on that fits, such as the waste, the water treatment site on Second, once it's cleaned up and whatnot, we can move it. Or if we find out that this doesn't work here, I assume we would pick this back up and say, you know, let's go back to the drawing board. Yes, we have this, so we're meeting the letter and the spirit of, of everything, you know, the laws and the court cases. But, you know, maybe we need to look at something else at that point.
Well, I, I would just wanna remind everybody that, that I think when we look at this issue, we're looking at just one side of it, and we're failing to remember the, you know, I'll, I'll say it bluntly. If we were gonna pick it across the street from your house, would you be for it?
No.
Yeah, no, nobody...
So that's one of those factors that you, we as a council really have to look at. And I know this is, for some of us, it's brand new. So we've only had two, two meetings, and we're trying to find a solution, and we, we know the deadline. But to keep in mind that, that there, it's kind of, it's a, it's a hard one. But, you know, you ask questions like that, would you have it across the street from your house? And almost 100% are gonna say, no, I would not. So remember that, you know, on this subject, that when you're thinking of alternative sites, remember that. Because to have it on, at Ralston Park, there's people that, that didn't agree with that. You know, there's a lot of people that live right there. And, you know, maybe that's why I was kind of looking at a, a place that provided resources, wasn't right in the middle of a, a residential area. It's, you know, I'm opposed to out by the, the water treatment plant for security reasons. That's a major infrastructure piece of our city. I, I don't really wanna pit that and risk of any, any damage or, or anything like that, that would affect all citizens. So, really, between this meeting and next meeting, please, please remember all those different factors. I know there's a place out there, we just, we just need to look really hard. I'm, me personally, I know I don't have a vote in this, unless it's a tie, but I'm, I'm opposed to all three of those sites, for a whole variety of reasons. I know that that, I'm not saying that to try to, try to influence your guys' decision as council, but I think there's better options out there, and we just need to look really hard to try to find them. I'm not saying that the, the committee didn't do their due diligence on, on this issue, but sometimes, you know, people have, you know, that get assigned to councils, or to committees have agendas, they see only one side of the issue, they're not thinking of the, the health and welfare of the whole city of Lebanon. And, and that's how I look at the issue. So, anyhow, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I don't think anybody finds this acceptable. We have to get someplace with it, so we can go from there.
Exactly. I, I don't love any of these either. But if, if it meets the spirit in the, in the letter of the statute and the court cases, then this might be what has to get us by.
Gives us more time to, to adequately research what we're doing, if we find another spot.
And, you know, the previous council did leave this. We weren't trying to hang it on you guys.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't, wasn't trying to imply that at all.
Just to be clear, this is a big decision, as obviously this, you know, discussion has been taking place for, and we wanted to ensure that you guys were part of the discussion, so...
I, I know that, I, I work with Nancy weekly, and, and we talk about a whole bunch of different issues. But, but this, this one is a priority for me, to try to find that, that space that, that it has the least amount of effect on everybody. These, these spaces, I think, I'll just say it, I think if we picked any one of those spaces, it would be a disaster for, for the public. It might fit our needs, and it might fit the letter of the law, because I, I look at that, too. I have notes. I looked at all the, the different aspects of, of the case law. And what, you know, you, you catch yourself thinking, what is the minimum I need to do here? Okay? That gets us only so far, because, you know, we're gonna have to take it even farther. But I know I'm, I'll pledge right now that I will keep working this issue to try to find a space that, that has the least amount of impact on everybody, including the people that we're trying to find a place for them to spend the night.
Well, then is it worth staff trying to craft a resolution for us for the next meeting if you're saying that all three of these would be a disaster for the city?
I'm just saying that, that, no. What I'm saying is that I think they would be, but if, if the council chooses to take these places up, that's a council's prerogative by the city charter. So, the ides, I foresee that they, they, short-term, yes, maybe they'll work.
Absolutely.
Okay. Long-term, no, not at all. So, that's, that's, that's my opinion of it.
Long, long-term, the solution is to find a shelter.
Yes. But that opens up a whole bunch of other discussions we could have. So, that's... anybody else?